All right, are we ready? Justin, would you lead us into the application?
Yes, sir. Please pray with me. Dear heavenly Father, God, we love you. God, we just praise your name for all things. We thank you for the many blessings you give. God, we just thank you for our first responders. We pray that you just continue to give them protection as they serve. But we thank you for the medical field and the doctors, Lord, that help us as we're on the backside of this pandemic. We pray that you just continue to keep us safe and healthy. God, tonight, we ask for leadership and direction for our committee, God, that we make wise decisions that will be honoring to you. God, we love you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, Tracy, please sign the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and convene our meeting. Start with a roll call. Misty Cottle.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Jan Throgmorden.
Here.
Marty Linderberry.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Deanna McKnight.
Here.
Stephen Pence.
Here.
Don Rollins.
Here.
City attorney and city clerk both present. The first item on our agenda is the approval of our agenda. Do we have any changes that need to make to that? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion. Have we accepted that?
Second. Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Oh, and before I forget, Justin just asked if everyone would speak up when we talk tonight. I think we're getting some complaints on YouTube about it being hard to hear us, so just try to raise your voice a little bit.
Don't come to me. Excuse me, did I say that wrong?
So, the next item is the approval of our minutes from our last meeting. Do we have any changes that need to be made to those?
I made a motion, we approve them. Yes, please. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next item is our public forum. Do we have anyone who would like to address the council during the public forum? Hearing done, we'll close that, move into our business reports. Up first, Walter Harnish with the planning commission.
Good evening. So, last month, unfortunately, the public hearing for the judicial use fell through, so that didn't happen. You know what they're going to complain on doing with that. We had a couple lot splits we got done. Mr. Patrick came in. He's, we did a lot split here a couple months back, there was some land off back to Smith Street that he was looking at. He came in just to see how we would feel possibly if he didn't keep developing that, so who knows with that goes from there. And beyond that, it's broken records still, but we're moving ahead with the plan, the Title 14 zoning ordinance draft, and we're going to be moving on to the map here pretty soon. So, if anybody would like to comment on that, we sure would appreciate it. But other than that, if you have any questions, business as usual.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It's kind of late to ask, but did you guys know what kind of chemicals they're going to use in this new business down here?
I don't. I don't know much of any, really. They're just stamping coins.
Just stamping?
I thought. I mean, they may do some finishing. I don't know.
I just wondered.
But what I've looked into it, it just looks like it's just stamping out coins. They get the metal blanks, and then they stamp whatever they stamp.
Okay. All right. That answers my question. Thank you.
Yeah.
Just wondered.
Any other questions for Walter? So, Walter, I do need to get with you and Isaac after the meeting. Are you going to be here for the whole meeting?
Sure.
Okay. There's another developer that has reached out to me today about that Smith Street property.
Okay.
And he's wanting to get together and talk about a couple of issues with you guys, so we'll get something set up there.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Next, Tracy, court report.
Yeah. Our citations had our first been down a little bit, and the warrants were up, and we rescheduled a bunch because of the snow and stuff that's been reset for this month, so I expect a lot more higher numbers this month, I guess. I also want to thank the PD for getting our security cameras in. We've got those going, and Christie got me a new battery for my Norville, so I feel real secure now. Nobody can sneak up on me. Good job.
Any questions for Tracy? Thank you, Tracy. Next, our library report. Shannon.
All right. We are focusing on our reopening plans. We're a little longer have to make appointments until we get to that date that we just encourage everyone to still call and make an appointment. We're basing this date on COVID numbers and stat vaccinations and fever vaccinations as well. And we have a meeting with our county director next week to coordinate that along with the other Washington County members. We are getting ready for our spring break event by appointment 23rd through the 27th. We encourage everybody to come, look at some local art displays, and also join us on the 26th for a virtual and in-person paint night. We can't fit more than probably about 10, 15, 20 people in the library, how we have everything mapped out, so for those that sign up too late, you'll still be able to participate virtually. And then we're really looking forward to continuing virtual programming. It's fun. Through this change, we've learned a lot, and a lot of people are really enjoying being able to do things at home with us, but we're also looking forward to starting up, you know, over the summer, in-person events, and for March, April, doing things in this beautiful weather. And you may have heard some Dr. Seuss books have upped in value. So, with that, I also appreciate the PD. I was, it was late at night, and I called and said, hey, can you patrol the library? I'm feeling funny that someone may try to get these Dr. Seuss books, but I just appreciate the friendliness. And we did have some people within the company trying to check these items out, so we since had to take them off, you know, put them in collection metal. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Next, Chief Nelson with the police department report.
Slower, slower month. I think that's a lot due to the weather. We had 82 citations, 52 wins, but we had 85 warrants that were served. It's looking a little bit better, some of the trains coming back around. They're allowing us to go personally to some train. I've got some officers signed up in that. We finalized our JAG grant, things for everybody that had to sign. It's a lot to sign and go through, but hopefully we'll get that approved, it's $2,500. See if we've got anything going right now. As we said, our security cameras are finished. We're thankful for that. They did a great job. That's about it.
Any questions?
If you ask it, no, I didn't. I did it myself. I didn't fly and do anything. I do that on my tractor trying to fix it, so don't call me a community parent.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, sir. I would like to say Chief Goggins isn't here tonight, but be sure and thank him for the road report that he did while we had the bad weather. I'm glad he picked that up and ran with it. Isaac, took the works.
Well, we made it through the snowstorm. I didn't see just very few complaints on our side of the looking for me, but we did spend two days clearing roads, well, three days. I had a couple of guys work on Saturday clearing roads. We ran into some issues with our equipment. It won't start, it was 20 below, so we had some leaks to fix that day as well, so we fixed three leaks, and I can't even count how many meters we shut off for people that were froze up and busted. And we fixed three or four leaks since then, so water loss this month will be a disaster. We have started replacing Boyd Street Zero Line. It's kind of snowed though as we go up through there. Did have some leak detection folks come in, and after, after the snowstorm, and they did all of this side of town, on this side of the river, they come up with about four leaks on our side, and about a half a dozen on the customer's side that the meter wasn't picking up, so we did catch some water loss there, so we're getting those drawn in to get fixed. The big thing was the boiler that come down, that was Fayetteville. They had a ton of leaks during the snowstorm, and they're fixing a ton of leaks after, so that one was there at the airport, and they fixed it, it blew out, and fixed it again, it blew out, so they were the ones that issued the boiler, and we're just, we're downstream, so we're the unlucky ones that kept going up to. But those samples passed, and it was good, so. You haven't seen this guy in a while, I'll let him give you that on the server. If you got a minute to listen to him, he can get you up to speed.
Sure. One minute.
I gotta, yeah. If you haven't noticed, my little updates getting a little shorter and shorter as we're getting things wrapped up, but as far as the main project, I mean, the pump station's running, everything's going well there, you know, substantially complete in December, you know. We're just really working on some final cleanup items. The weather obviously hasn't helped as much, you know, and also foot is snowing and melting off, it's like things kind of, it's drying out, so we're trying to get things wrapped up there about 97% complete overall. The next things we're working on, oh, we did start, did they get the cameras started again this week?
No.
Okay. Yeah, they tried to start cameraing the line that goes up Main Street up to Doe a couple weeks ago, and that did not fare well for them, so we sent them back to find a better way to do it right. Hopefully, they'll get back out there here in the next week or two to resume that. But on the wastewater plant closure plan, we've responded to all the DEQ comments. We did that last week. They're waiting on the lab results from GTS. We had to take some samples out of, out of the pollen and wastewater plants, so they could see what was, what was in the sludge. As soon as we get that approved, we'll start hauling sludge, and it'll be taken over to City Huntsville and disposed of their, their plant. They've graciously offered to accept it, so. Once we do hit that stage, then we'll start working with a contractor on a price to actually fill in the lagoons there. We've got a bunch of fill material from our project that we're going to use to fill them in. Mayor, I haven't heard anything back from DEQ on our consent order extension request, you know, the final compliance was ended in December, and we sent them a letter saying we're pumping to Fayetteville and have some closure activities, and I think this closure plan is, they're waiting to approve that before they respond there, so there's no worries. I continue to send them a report every month, and they acknowledge that they get it, and we just keep moving forward. The additional sewer rehab, we're getting started on that. First stop will be McKnight, just down that way. Contractor will be replacing that level here, put a line. There will be some one-way traffic while they're working right next to the road, so I'm sure they'll ask everyone just to be patient as they're getting through there, but that'll be their first project, and then we've got some replacements to deal with at the school, and then Westwood through some backyards. We got all the surveys done on that a week or two ago, so I'll start drawing up plans on those in the upcoming weeks. Other than that, I mean, we've just got to do a final walkthrough on Fayetteville's line, so they can accept it, the 24-inch, and that's about all. Now, any questions?
Did you have a good birthday? Did you have a good birthday?
Yeah, I did. Other than I tried to go for a run, and I pulled both my half muscles, so honestly, I'm learning I'm getting too old to be doing that, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I will point out that for January and February, we have done 16 million through the lift station up there, so I think that roughly figures out about 300.
Oh, is it six?
We, no, I recalculated. We were at 16 million. We thought we were around 12, but we're at 16, so.
So, that's still 8 million a month.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Which is about where the state had us calculated.
A little above, but better than last year.
Yes, much better than what we were anticipating.
Yeah, so we're hoping to see that trend keep down, especially as we get some of these major replacements done. Those are definitely contributors. There's no question about it, so.
And the Dock Creek Bridge is going to be open.
It's what?
Dock Creek Bridge is going to be open.
Okay.
They're done with.
So, a couple of things before we move on. I don't know if everyone received the emails or not, but I did receive four emails thanking Isaac and his department for the work they did during that snowstorm. Those guys were out there in some cold weather, fixing leaks, and it was nice to see. I was sitting there one day at work, and it was just boom, boom, boom. I got four emails, just almost back-to-back, citizens who had seen those guys out there working in that nastiness, trying to get that water on, and they, they took the time to write a thank you email, and so please pass that on to your guys, Isaac. We don't always get those, so it's nice that, number one, someone noticed it, but number two, took the time to say thank you. I haven't coughed in three weeks, but something got my throat hickling. Look out, Tom. Also, on the boil order, excuse me, on the boil order. So, I did get some inquiries about that and why we do not do more to, to make the boil orders known. So, I wanted to take just a second to let the council know what steps we do take. First off, that was our first boil order in over 18 years at the city of Westport, so not something that we, we do every day, but the steps we do take. We hit all Facebook pages, city website. They personally call every business in town that has something to do with the public, so the school gets a call, the restaurants get a call, Harps gets a call. What am I leaving out, Christie?
Daycare.
Daycare gets a call.
Easy Mart, anywhere they had drinks, drinks for food service, all the restaurants.
So, that being said, in the old days, and we also contact the media, right, and we send out an email that everyone who has signed up for a request to be on our email list, they get an email of it. Christie and I have both talked about, we've looked into different systems, alert systems. We're still looking at different alert systems. It kind of goes back to the city not having street clouts. That was our first real snow in over five years. How much money do we put into a system when it is used so infrequently? And like I said, we're still looking at, at alert systems. We would like to get something that if, if people would sign up, they would get a text message or a phone call or something. We would like to do more like that. It's a matter of money and how often we're going to use it. Same with, I've talked to Isaac about getting the beet juice sprayer, so we can spray the streets. Isaac and I have talked about our spreader that we do have that spreads the gravel is now broken. Where do we stop at, at that type of thing? And that's, you know, it's not an easy answer, but it's, it's something that we are working through, and I want you guys to be aware of that, that, you know, there are ongoing discussions about how much money do we spend? We don't have this. Why do we not have it? Well, how much does it cost? You know, those types of, those types of discussions are happening, but with the boil order, I feel like we're, you know, outside of calling every, every person in the city or knocking on every person's door, we're doing just about all we can do to get that alert out. So, if anybody asks, please tell them that the city does maintain an email list. The city just doesn't put you on it automatically, right? We don't know everyone's email address, so if you will call and ask, we'll happily put you on that. You'll get a notice anytime something happens in the city, but know that, that we are looking at, into different things and.
Can they do it on the marquee?
Do what?
Can they go up on the marquee?
Sure, yeah, we can do that.
So many people drive by and see that. I mean, they pay more attention to that than they do anything else.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly put something up there notifying people that.
If they drive through town, they're going to know.
Yeah?
It was, I knew by probably 11:30 that we were going to be put on boiler, and then Fayetteville posted theirs a noon, which went through to 5:00 noon, so then I think we started getting calls because they said everything that Fayetteville fed south was, technically, we went on boiler. We were still operating on stored water, because they didn't have the water back on. So, we didn't technically go on boiler until like 3:00, when Fayetteville first turned the valve and sent water back here, so it was confusing, and we were trying to, we were, me and Christie were sitting on go, we're just ready to put it out. Fayetteville issued theirs, it has to go to the health department, then the health department issued ours, and then they issued washing water, they buy water from us, so it was kind of a sit around and wait type deal, but we knew it was coming, so we were trying to let the folks know.
For those email alerts, do they have to call, or can they do it through the website? I think with our technology, they're going to have to call in and ask to be put on that.
And that we make sure people understand that that is a FOIA list?
Yes.
That's not going to be an emergency alert thing. They're going to get all meeting notes with issues. Some people want that, and some people don't want all that, so the few people that have called, I've said I'm really glad that you're on it, but let me explain to you what that means you're going to get. Someone said, sure, so they're willing to.
It is subject to FOIA?
It is, it's considered a FOIA list, which basically means that they're going to get notification of all our public meetings, so they're going to get more than just an emergency alert, in other words, so.
That was more than some we're ready to bargain for, huh?
They didn't want to know that much.
Okay. Any other questions concerning any of that, or for Nick or Isaac? No? Okay. Next, our park report. Chad?
So, I've got a few things in the package that I want to kind of expand upon and highlight. First, baseball ball is off and running. High school display they're playing down there right now is their third night for the season, and so far, things gone really well, even following the COVID guidelines and things that the high school has to, to follow. Everything's going pretty well. My team's organized, coaches have got their rosters. Some will start practicing as early as later this week. We're in a committee, it's going to rain, so it's off to a good start, and we're excited. Hopefully, we'll get through without any real issues. And COVID things are starting to trickle down, so we're outside, we're going to play ball and that. I did, we did finally get a final approval on proof for the Paul Mueller memorial. As y'all know, we gave Mueller Park back to the school, and in doing so, we decided at that time, we were going to rename one of our fields at Carter Park after Paul Mueller, so we got signs coming from the scoreboard, the field itself, and then this plaque. We wanted people to know who he was, because a lot of people might not know or remember or, so we wanted, we wanted to get a plaque that we're going to hang on the, behind the scores table. So, I included that in there as well, also for you guys, it's not your best picture in the world, but it's going to be really nice. We're excited about it. We're going to have a dedication ceremony at some point, probably in the first couple weeks of April is what we're hoping for, let the weather get a little better, but also I want to make sure I have this plaque and everything in the end before I schedule, and then we'll give it to Mueller family, because we want to make sure it's a time that they can be there as well, so we are going to do that. I smoke a little law enforcement, and so as soon as I have it all that said, I'll make sure y'all know about it as well. And then the only other thing is have for the bike pedestrian trail that we've been working on, it got put on hold last year. We're ready to pack up, we're, we're ready to get that going. The committee did approve to move forward with Zach Johnson's engineering on doing the design and the bid package and pretty much overall overseeing of the project. I just got a contract from him this afternoon, and I printed it, and I gave the mayor a copy, and I know he's really not had a chance to look at it, but what I would like to do is see if the council would give him his permission to negotiate that contract and sign it, so we can get moving forward with that.
Motion.
I'm making a motion that we give the mayor whatever he needs to go on.
Okay, before we take a vote on that, are there any questions concerning that as far as what's in it? So, I've briefly looked at it, Chad and I have talked about it. We were originally looking at getting a TAP grant for this trail, and that sounded great to get a TAP grant and let them pay for it. However, the engineering fees alone for the TAP grant were going to be $40,000. What we're looking at here in this contract is engineering fees of $11,000, if we, if we don't have to follow all of the red tape connected to TAP grants. So, that's, that's what we're kind of looking at, is, is hiring an engineer, that's what this is, hiring an engineer personally, have him work for the city, go do the engineering work, and then we would hire someone to do the trail work.
So, with this, with these engineering fees and the proposed construction cost is going to be about the same as what our portion of the TAP grant would be. So, TAP grants probably not somewhere we're looking at. There are some other grants out there that are not as restrictive and doesn't cost as much and things like that, so we are looking at other grant opportunities, but hopefully we can do it, you know, if, even without getting any grants, we can do it this way and still with the state within our money that we budgeted to do the project for this year. So, but we are going to look at, once we get some final costs, some more definite costs, we're going to look at some other grant opportunities that are out there.
So, we're going to move to motion in a second. Are you still, would you like to withdraw that?
No.
Okay. Are there any other questions concerning it?
How big is the bike tour? How long or?
Overall length, it'll be almost, it'll be just right at 3/4 of a mile. What we're actually adding is about, is just over half a mile of trails, what we're adding, but it will connect with the existing eight-foot sidewalk that's down there now and make a nice loop, so, and we are going to make it eight feet wide, which is wide enough to do bikes and pedestrians. We don't really have any sidewalks or trails or anything in the park or in the city at this time that's really safe enough for multi-use. We're going to strike it, put up signs on the state one side, things like that. It's not going to get what your greenway's going to get, you know, experienced bike riders that want to go ride for 40 miles, not going to come down here and go around in circles, but citizens and kids and things, be able to go down there and have a nice little trail ride their bike along and to walk. Parents, when their kids are practicing, get a nice walking trail.
That'd be good.
And, you know, when Riverside, if and when Riverside gets back to, you know, 500 people down there a weekend, and the walkers think they're down there enjoying, we'll have another nice trail to walk as well. We're really excited about the additions at Parks.
Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor of allowing me to negotiate? Tom, did you have anything you need to add to this?
It's, it's engineering, Nelson.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the table allowing me to negotiate, sign this contract for engineering the trail at the parks. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Any other questions for Chad? I think he's going to give you a copy of that. No? Okay, thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Chief Myers?
So, really the best exciting thing I've got is managed to talk TJ Howard into coming back from our fire department, so that he can go take over our training division. He's not coming out of retirement, but coming back, and that'll help take us to the next level where we need to be with that. I'm really excited about that. Did have a lot of calls. We had 75 calls for the month, most of those were naturally during the week in bad weather. There was a little misunderstanding about some of that. We did open a fire station for a one-division, which we will do anytime, doesn't matter, doesn't necessarily have to be that type of event, but, you know, if there's any elderly people around that can't make it to the fires, can't get out of their house, handicap order, please call the fire station and make sure we have somebody there. We will come and get them, bring them in if we need to. With the rolling blackout, and it was really bad, so we will always continue to open that up. If it is to be a several-day-long event, something like that, we may have come, you know, moved down here, but we will always open that up if they need it, so. But we will always open that up if they need it, so. So hopefully with COVID kind of relax and some guidelines, we're hoping to do a little more community involvement. I am gonna be looking at, I'll need to redo the floors of the fire station, so trying to get rid of the carpet, it's just been really hard to take care of. Looking at with the best options, so may have to come to you sometime in the next month or two and look for a little money to replace the floors, so just kind of have why. Other than that, I think that's all I've got.
Any questions for Chief Myers? Thank you, sir. Next, Christie, give us a finance report.
We are two months in, so budgets look really good still, obviously. We're under budget. That's great, but it's two months in, so we won't stay on that subject very long. But city sales tax compared to this time last year is up fourteen, almost fifteen percent. So I think all the numbers look really good. We do have a spring cleanup planned, scheduled for April ninth and tenth. The quartz building is still having some condensation issues. Volcanic Shell and our architect have been talking. They're wanting to bring some, possibly get the engineer that's involved in the building down, put some monitors up in the access on, on some of the moisture levels. We've also talked, the architect's also given us a recommendation on some, a spray that can go on the app, on the exterior, that will be a water repellent or whatever. We are also getting some estimates on painting the exterior of the building. We've got four companies waiting to get back to us on those, so that'll at least give us an idea of what kind of cost we're really gonna add to make the outside look as good as the inside. And obviously, we're wanting to do the neurons still on that building, so we'll take that into consideration with, with the price of that also. Just so you guys know that that's what's going on. The condensation, we, I mean, we've gotta figure out something on that, or we're gonna end up having to spend all the money to just make a nice building and then have more issues or whatever else that we don't do it under control. So hopefully, in the next week or so, we'll hear from Volcanic Shell on the plan for the monitoring on that.
Any questions for Christie?
So this may be a silly question, that are they gonna fix that at no cost because it's so soon after construction, or are we gonna have to pay for anything that needs to be fixed?
I haven't had that discussion with them, but my assumption is gonna be, is it's gonna be on us.
So I think where they're going with it, Dina, is that the brick on the outside of that building is, it's old, and it's porous, and it's not sealed, and so, and Isaac, Christie, jump in if I get off base, but somehow, it's, it's almost creating like a vacuum when that brick gets wet and it's pulling it in, and then when the heat and the air kick on, it's, it's sucking that moisture in and then dropping it.
So is that not something they should have foreseen and advised us on prior to all that?
You would sure think so, wouldn't you?
I would think so.
And Isaac said the other day, he thought part of it had to do with the roof also, because there's not a barrier.
There's no, there's no insulation underneath the metal roofing, so all, when you look up in there, all you see is metal, and it condensates on the bottom. When we get a cool morning and a hot afternoon, it's, it's-
And to some of your, your question, Dina, some of that was brought up prior. How much was it gonna cost, Christie, to get that building painted and sealed? Or whatever they were?
So what we got the estimate for-
We cut some stuff out.
Yeah. What we got the estimate for during construction was for them to take the building back to the original, so basically they would have stripped all the paint, which is what the architect basically says a lot of the problem is because of this painting, because the paint holds the moisture in. Anyway, so the, the estimate that we got was to strip the paint and then repaint, I think is what it's called, basically fix the breakage damage. And it was like a hundred and ten thousand dollars to do that, so that obviously was much more than we could.
So when, when we originally were looking at that project, the city passed, passed a tax increase to pay for those projects. It was close to three years later before we got bids. When we got the bid on the courthouse, we were way over the anticipated budget. And so we started, we started hacking things out of that, out of that bid to get it back down within, well, it still wasn't in, within budget, we still paid extra, but, but that was a big piece of it that we did not move forward with. Hindsight. No, I mean, it was what it was. We, the fact that we were as close as we were on something that they planned for, three years later, we actually started getting quotes on, I think we did pretty well. It is unfortunate that that building has, it has a moisture issue that we're having to deal with now, so it will probably be on us.
And I think, I mean, whether they had advised us or not, it still would have been on us, so it may have been easier to fix. And it was not complete, but we are where we are, so that's, that's what we're looking at, hopefully we can get some ideas to kind of make that better.
Any other thing, any other questions? No? Anyone else? Thank you, Christie. So next, we have no old business, move into new business. Item one is to approve fifty thousand dollars from the street savings to supplement Arkansas DOT's street aid project. I believe that is in your packet.
On the last page, back of the last page.
Back of the last page, yeah. So on this, this is, Isaac, how many years ago did we apply for this, three?
Yeah, this is year three. So we've been put down for prior to. So what that kind of boils down to is, we send them the streets we want to do. They kind of, they'll come and look at them, they just pull a number together and put that out, the bid of what they want. The contractors kind of bid that, and they allowed us three hundred thousand dollars for that, that much is what the state was allowing. Well, bid come in at three hundred ninety-five, so some of that, we're wanting to do fifty thousand, that's kind of what the email read, said I took fifty thousand. When we actually sat down in a construction meeting, we're gonna start trimming that off. There's a lot of stuff in there that, that the state puts in their deal that we don't want. We don't want gravel shovers through residential neighborhoods, all that stuff that we can trim off that and bring that price down. So I don't think we're gonna spend on a lot of money, over three hundred thousand, but they, they want assurance that we will pick up the slack, that's what that's for, so.
And how that works, if we approve that, we actually have to send them the fifty thousand. When they're done with the project, they'll reimburse us for anything that they don't use.
So you're saying we're not gonna need more?
No.
You're not saying that, or?
They will-
They will-
They will trim the project back to meet, so if we, if we approve fifty thousand, then the budget will be three hundred fifty thousand. They'll trim the project back to meet that, so that it doesn't go over that. If, then, so that they would take the distance, let's just say that's for two miles, they'll take it down to a mile and a half, that's what it takes. And then we can start saying, "Don't put the gravel on the sides," or whatever, and that, that will give us the refund off of fifty thousand. And it's scheduled to start in August, is that what you're saying?
Well, I talked to the asphalt company that did our last little thing here in town. He was telling me that he didn't get our bid, which I didn't even know I'd been up to bid, and he said he missed it by three grand. Well, he went on to say that they have to start at, their time starts on August twenty-third, but they can start anytime before then, and then they have forty days of construction or something like that, so. So they give them a drop dead date, this is when your time's gonna start, so. Sometimes that's, that's how you do it.
Any other questions about that? Any thoughts on it?
Any motion?
Any motions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the fifty grand.
Do we know what streets that is? Do you guys still remember that? We've talked about it in prior meetings. Some of you guys may not have even been on the council when we talked about it.
McKnight Street from the cabin, the law cabin, to Colt Street, or just past Colt Street, Olive Pleasant Street from Main to Riverwood and Alhalla from Seventy-One to where it ends, so. And yes, it is saving us money because the huge street cut that oil is gonna make on McKnight, these people are gonna pay for it over it, so we're not paying for the oils to repair street cuts.
All right, so we have a motion in second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no, that motion carries. The next item on the budget, approve a budget adjustment for the police budget to replace a total vehicle, asking for a budget adjustment not to exceed twelve thousand dollars.
Does that include the insurance money?
Yes.
Okay, and is it gonna be all wheel drive?
All wheel drive, what we're trying to get.
All wheel?
Trying to get an all wheel drive charter. The, the truck brought back twenty-two thousand after it was set down, which I thought was wonderful, so I think with the twelve thousand we go, I think the charger all wheel drive is about twenty-six right now. The two-wheel drive's twenty-four, they've been up, they're up about two thousand from last year, I think. But that's where that would put us, I think we can get it all done for-
That includes-
For that much, because I've also got a little bit of money in capital out there. We just, little bit, not much, but I sold some.
Is that to market and everything?
That's to market and install all the lights, yeah, that's everything. It looked basically like our other charter.
I make a motion we give you the twelve grand.
Jan, slow down, let's see if we have any questions. Jan got her question answered, she's ready to move on.
So what, what did we told them?
Huh?
What we told them?
The truck.
So are you gonna be able to, did you, are you selling, you saying you sold parks, like light bars, stuff like that from, or are you gonna do-
No, we'll get all that back though. So I'll get to reuse, like the radio is still good. Nothing inside the cab was hurt. Of course, the cage will be a loss, I don't have anything for the cage back in, but the-
I bet you, I bet you can still get rid of it, there's a lot of pickup to it.
Well, if I can get rid of, yeah, if I can get this and stuff, I can get rid of it.
We can do that, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes, I'll get approval from him if I can find buyers for some of the stuff. But a lot of stuff we can reuse, such as the radar, it was about eighteen hundred dollars, the radio, I'd hate to have to buy a new radio right now, we're all about to switch. So we plan on using all that stuff that we can, and then just putting it to the-
So, I mean, really, your cage is your major thing that you're not gonna be able to reuse?
Yeah, the cage always was, yeah. Eighteen, somewhere around there, eighteen hundred?
Any other questions before Jan seconds herself?
Is everybody okay?
Yeah, the officer had a concussion, but she's already been released, and she's back to work, she's doing all right.
Any other questions on that?
I'm second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no, that motion carries. Next item on our agenda is other business. Is there any other business that the council would like to conduct tonight? No? Next, mayor's comments. I don't really have any comments, it was, it wasn't a slow month, but it wasn't a quiet month, but we got through it. Budgets look good, sales tax looks good, chief brought up radios. I think everyone's aware that the county is looking at getting new radios. I think it's a good thing that the county sales tax is up, that should help that radio budget. I was talking to a Fayetteville firefighter last week, week before, and they were saying that they should, we should start to hear something about the infrastructure project being started soon, so. Shannon will do Ask the Mayor on Friday at three thirty, okay? Nothing else from the council?
I make a motion adjourned.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no, that motion carries. We are adjourned.